Good afternoon and welcome to the March 17th, 2025 Budget Audit Committee Meeting. And I'll call the meeting to order and then I think we can do a visual roll call that Vice Mayor Juan and I are both here. We'll move on to item number two, which is public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone who wishes to make public comment on non-agenda? Okay, Mr. Gavidi, go ahead. Three minutes.
I love being a ham, don't I? Tomorrow, you guys are doing a mid-year budget review. One thing that I really think is important that should be discussed, and you know, last year apparently didn't come out that well, is the fact that there was an accounting error that was caught by our wonderful Assistant City Manager that, you know, at this time, we don't know how far back it went. It was a sizable error. I was at the Budget and Audit Committee Meeting last year when it was discussed. That one was not recorded. Obviously, when that happens, it's not intentional. It happens. But that error projected forward five, 10 years, what was it, Regina, quarter million dollars? That's going to create the whole issue of there's this gigantic deficit, which, you know, I have been commenting both here and in my committee that there's a lot of people on social media who keep insisting that the city's broke and spreading this information outside of the city. I know that Chair Schulman from Planning Commission came up here not too long ago when I did, that she's been approached by council members from other cities. I know I've had friends from Concord and neighbors ask me if it's true that we're going broke. Nothing further from the truth. So it's very important that tomorrow that be covered so the public's aware of it, that that projection went back possibly to city managers, and you know, that we be accurate about the fact that the city is sitting on, what, 14, 15 million dollars between both reserves? And although the budget is tight, we're not going broke. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Public comment on non-agenda items? No, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our action items. Item number three A is approval of the February 10th meeting minutes. Do you have a motion?
We need that for public comment.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I always forget that. Public comment on item 3A? No, no public comment, okay. Do I have a motion? Ooh, is your thing working?
I have no battery.
Oh, oh. Let's switch.
It's intentional.
The floor model. The floor model with no battery. Hopefully, we have enough money in the budget for batteries. Yes.
Move approval.
Okay, I second.
Do we need a vote?
Do we need a vote?
Aye.
I can take it as a majority, thank you.
Aye, thank you, okay. And we'll move on now to action item 3B, which is a report from HDL on contract and performance for the business license services vendor agreement. And I believe we have Ian from HDL joining us online. And we'll let him walk us through the presentation. Hi, Ian.
Hi there.
Hi. Well, have you walked us?
I'm in a hotel room right now, so I just wanted to share my face and say hello.
Okay.
And I don't know, is the presentation going to be shared with you guys or would you, is it just going to be kind of a verbal presentation?
I think we should have a visual, so if we could bring up that presentation. And then what I'd prefer to do is have you walk us through it and then we'll ask you questions afterwards. Is that okay?
That's perfect, yes.
Okay, thanks, Ian. Just give us a moment to pull up the presentation.
I can see it, yes.
Okay, great. Just let us know when you're ready to begin.
Yeah, I'm ready. Thank you guys so much for having me. It's nice to be back in the city of Clayton, even though it's just virtual. So thank you guys for having me and I will look to be presenting you guys on the Business License Administration and Compliance Program. If you can just move to the next slide and we'll just start moving along. So first, we wanted to start with the scope of services and what's currently in progress and what's currently not in progress. So not going to go into obviously the nitty-gritty details of every single thing that's on this slide here, but generally, we have our Operations Management Services, which is your day-to-day operational items. So this is businesses that are renewing on the annual basis in June. Then there is the second part of it, which is the businesses who apply with us on a, you know, daily basis, which are businesses that are either starting a new business, maybe they're contractors, just tons of different businesses that are basically applying or starting new businesses in your city, and also the businesses that are renewing with your community. We have our second service that is currently active, which is our collection services. So this is basically businesses who were delinquent at some point in time, and then we get them registered, basically re-registered with the city in one way or another. So basically, we inherited, just to go into a little bit more detail, when we first took over the business license data, there was a report that was given to us by the previous city manager and previous city staff that showed that there was around 1,100 businesses that were currently in the system. It had turned out that there was a large majority of those businesses that were actually not licensed or not licensable and not actually having any legitimate nexus within the city, which we'll talk about that a little bit more during the report. But I just wanted to hyper-focus at the collection services. The main priority of that and why we started with that was that the data that we had received was that most of the businesses were actually classified as a delinquent business slash active business within the city. And then they turned out to be businesses who had either left the city previously or never were actually doing business in the city at all. And then the last service that we have available within the contract, which has not yet started, but obviously, the HDL companies is very much open to doing this type of program, is our discovery services. So this is the identification of unlicensed businesses within the city and then ensuring that those businesses are educated on the fact that they need to get licensed and then we get them licensed and get them paid up to date. Next slide, please. So this is our business tax operations timeline. So basically, what this is and what this is showing you is the number of notifications that a business actually gets in every renewal period. So it starts with 45 days previous to their expiration date. This is just an initial renewal reminder that tells them, hey, your renewal date's coming up, it's time to start reporting your business taxes. They'll receive a follow-up notice 37 days prior to their expiration date. They receive another notice via postal mail that is for their actual renewal form that is telling them it's time to renew. They receive a follow-up notice that reminds them that they had received that renewal notice 15 days before their expiration date. And they receive two more, one at 15 and one at 25 days after their expiration date, in order to help them understand that it's now become an urgency that they pay and that they get up to date with their business license. Next slide, please. This moves into the next stage. So after that six-note notice timeline that was just showed, this is when we start moving into different periods of our program. So there's our compliance aspect, which is the kind of, I would just call that the tree in the compliance timeline is called the compliance tree. And we have that as the identification, the verification, the collection and the monitoring of your current business license file. That tree has a couple of different branches on it. It's the collections and discovery efforts. Collections is basically preparing those businesses that have not renewed with your business license. We research those accounts to ensure that they're still doing business in your city and that they still are actually taxable within your jurisdiction. We email and notify those businesses and then we escalate if need be. So for an example, that might mean that we reach out to code enforcement or we reach out to different city staff to see if there's a business that actually needs to be followed up with, and we try to make sure that those businesses are paying in some way, shape or form. Then we have our discovery efforts, which is basically skip tracing slash businesses, like I mentioned in the previous effort, which is businesses who have never been registered in the first place. Again, it starts with a preparation phase of us trying to acquire data. We identify those businesses and send notifications out to them through mail, and then we try to get them registered. Next slide, please. So this is a little bit the detail I was talking about in the first slide. So Business License Administration, you have currently 524 accounts that are registered within the city. Again, that is a stark difference than what we acquired in the beginning of the contract. We were told that there was 1,100 businesses that were active. In reality, those businesses were not actually active in the city. There's a discrepancy within the data that was showing that they were quote-unquote "active businesses" when they were actually businesses that were no longer doing business in the city. To go into further detail, there are currently a bunch of, there's a lot of compliance work the HDL companies has done. So in total, we have collected 99 payments. So that's actually within that 524 number that you're seeing is the 99 payments that we collected. We recovered over $61,000 in business license revenue for you since the beginning of the contract. If anyone was here slash, you know, aware of the original promise that was made by HDL is that we promised that we would make around $18,000 per year. This was because that when we acquired the contract, there was a, again, an estimation of 1,100 businesses that were coming in and based on our fee, we were trying to cover our fee basically for taking over the program. So we've obviously much more than exceeded that. And another thing I would like to mention as well is because the actual number of notifications have, or not number of notifications, apologies, excuse me, because the number of active accounts have gone down, the actual billable amounts that the HDL companies is actually able to bill for is only on that 524. So the total cost to the city has actually gone down to around $8,000, and we've still managed to exceed that number and get to that $61,000 that we have mentioned. Again, moving into the discovery program, we, as HDL, are committed to starting this program at any time in which that city staff wants us to start this. This is basically, again, just the identification of businesses who are no longer licensed in the city, and we are trying to get them into compliance with the city's business license program. Next slide, please. This is just a little bit more of a deep dive into what has been done this fiscal year versus what has been done since the beginning of the contract. So in total, this fiscal year, we have collected $101,000 in business license revenue. And the total that has been remitted to the city based on from the contract perspective, just in what the HDL companies has received and then pushed over to you guys is 171,000. Next slide, please. We also wanted to go into a little bit of detail from what the online process looks like for your taxpayer community. We did not have an example of what the original business license application website looked like, but basically, the original business license application was a lot more outdated. It was a lot more clunky, and so we have upgraded it with this kind of more sleek detail. So businesses are able to more easily identify a frequently asked questions page, they're more easily able to identify the application section and the renewal section, they can kind of exactly tailor their experience on the website to exactly what they want it to be, and understand and be able to identify what they need to understand from the business license perspective. If they have any questions, obviously, they can always call into our offices, but generally, we try to make it so that the online application process slash renewal process is easy and accessible to every different person that wants to renew online. Next slide, please. And just a kind of last little tote of what our end-user customer service process looks like, taxpayers can always call our department between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM Pacific Standard Time, speak with one of our representatives. We do, just as a highlight, have a 95% SLA on all of our calls, which that SLA is basically any call that has to be answered in under one minute, and emails are answered in under 24 hours. Taxpayers can file, renew and make payments and ask general questions to the support team. And taxpayers can also renew and make payments via postal mail if they so choose, because maybe they just don't have access to the same type of material or they just trust the postal mail more than they trust the email or online. Next slide, please. Now I'm going to open it up for questions.
Okay, thank you, Ian. Vice Mayor Juan, do you want to go first?
Sure.
All right. So, thanks for joining us today. So I have a few questions that they're not necessarily in order. One of the things that you highlighted was the delta between the 1,100 estimate and the In your experience, would it, how difficult would it be to validate that 1,100 figure that was originally estimated with the actual? I mean, I'm thinking that we would bounce that against actual payments made in the immediate year prior. Like, are you aware of any work that was done to validate that figure?
Yeah, so that's a really good question. So when we originally proposed that number, I think that it had to do with a issue of communication with how and definitions, right? So describing what an active business is within a system, and especially within the system that the city was using, was a status symbol, basically. So it was a business who had never actually closed with the city's jurisdiction. It wasn't, we didn't do any, like, because we didn't even have access to your data when we signed on with this contract. We did not do any deep digging. We only could work off of what the information was provided us was, and that information specifically was the 1,100 businesses, and that's how we built the contract and that's how we were starting to, you know, make an approach to the city. What I believe happened was is that the city had this, you know, database that you have. Businesses may have been expired for a couple of years, businesses may have been floating under the radar for a couple of years, and on this kind of active status, businesses that may have been believed were active in the city, but were not actually in fact active because when we did our research and we did our validation, it turned out these businesses were no longer registered in the city, or no longer, apologies, active in the city. But generally speaking, that's what the collections process is for, is to follow up and validate those claims. That's what the, that process has basically accomplished, is cleaning up your data. Now you know exactly what businesses should be and shouldn't be registered in the city. The only next step to take, the next logical step to take would be to do that discovery program that we've mentioned, which is to follow up with businesses we don't know about yet.
Okay. I mean, as part of your diligence, you contracted with the city and your fee is based on the number of businesses or an estimate thereof. Did you, did HDL perform any diligence around validating that figure beyond what was told to you? Because I would imagine a delta of over 100% affects your revenue.
It does affect our revenue, except we, I mean, our, our goal is to ensure that you guys are, so the answer, the quick answer is no. We don't usually validate the data that is coming from you guys because our job is twofold, right? Is to manage the correct integrity of your guys' business license data and to obviously, I mean, if you're talking about just from a business perspective, we obviously have revenue goals that we're supposed to meet. But our primary focus is to ensure that the city's revenue goals are met, and that's exactly what we're attempting to do. We're attempting to make sure that you guys are cost efficient and that you guys are charging the correct business taxes to everyone and getting the right revenue that you're supposed to be getting.
So then in the, in the presentation, there was a slide that listed three major categories of like in-progress and then not started. Is there a category that is completed? Like, I'm curious, because the contract had a number of things in it, so is there another list somewhere that summarizes what's actually been delivered since contract inception?
Yeah, so that's a good question. Sorry. What was that, sir?
I was saying, I see the website is up, so obviously, you guys have built that and, you know, you've collected revenue, so you've done that. But I mean, as part of like a comprehensive status, it would, it would be helpful to not necessarily itemize, but at least summarize in a similar fashion the areas of service that have actually been delivered, because I think the presentation leaves that part out.
So that's a good point, but I do want to, I want to emphasize maybe a potential mischaracterization of how the, like, the service is supposed to work, right? So the service, when it's delivered, is actually constantly being delivered. So technically, the Operations Management section, which is saying in-progress, is a fully delivered program that's being done to you, right? We've sent notices to people, we're constantly acquiring these new applications and we're processing things as they come in, same things with the collections process. That's an ongoing process that happens whenever a business becomes a delinquent, right? So these processes, even though they say in progress, they are actually fully delivered services, they're just in progress in the way that they're currently active, right? And these services are currently being done on an everyday basis. It's not like a one-time thing that gets hap, that happens and then it gets dropped off. These are constant services that are being provided. It's the same thing with the tertiary service that we're talking about, the discovery, discovery program. That is a program that is not turned on at the moment, but once it's turned on, it never stops until told otherwise, right? So it basically continuously operates and continuously is, is done until there is no businesses left to discover.
Okay. Thank you, that's helpful. I think it may be more accurate or it would provide more clarity to describe that as rather than in-progress, as like ongoing services or something like that, so that it, it clearly indicates that, because from a, from a reader, it makes, it gives the appearance that these are essentially not done yet. So just a feedback on that one. The other part that was identified in the deck was this concept of that discovery, the discovery services hasn't started because of various staff turnover. So I'm interested in understanding what efforts would have occurred that did not occur as a result of this turnover. I think, when I think about the timing of the contract execution as well as staff in place, it seems like there was opportunity to do this, but you're, the presentation's indicating that there was not. So if you could kind of provide a little bit more color around what wasn't done that you would have expected to be done had there, you've been, had you been able to contact with appropriate staff?
Yeah. So I don't think it's, I want to make sure I'm coloring it correctly as well, which is that we're not pushing the blame onto staff or we're not saying that there needed to be something done from staff level. Staff has done everything that's supposed to be done. I think it's mainly more of a miscommunication. There is a, there was a turnover in staff that obviously happened a couple, like, from a couple of different levels. And HDL, we have a, we have a standardized policy, I guess is the best way to put it, which is that the HDL companies does not try to do any massive discovery program, which discovery programs by nature, because that they're trying to identify multiple businesses and we're trying to, you know, generate revenue for the city, it causes a certain level of political turmoil and a certain level of just hesitation from the business community because it's a, it's, obviously, we're reaching out to people to pay business taxes, right? That's not a fun notice to get in the mail, it's not a, it's not a good thing to receive. And so it causes this type of, this type of turmoil, this type of stuff, and we require approval. And I think that from HDL's side, the thing that I want to make sure I'm focusing on, I don't think HDL received the approval and I don't think that HDL also did what it should have been doing to be proactive about that approval reach out, right? And so, that being said, the program is ready to be done, there's not anything that necessarily needs to be, like, if, for example, we leave this Budget Committee Meeting with the intent of HDL needs to start doing this discovery program pronto, we can work with the appropriate city staff and we can work with ourselves, obviously internally, to get, start getting notices pumped out and make sure that it's things that the city staff wants us to be working with and that it's something that the, that the council and the Budget Committee expects us to be doing on a, on an ongoing basis, so that we can make sure that we're delivering that service to you. So I think it's more of a, it's more of a miscommunication if anything, that rather than it's something that wasn't provided, if that helps bring clarity.
Yeah, and that, that kind of touches on the, where I was going. You know, I'm trying to understand whether or not there were things that were requested that weren't provided or there were requests that were not made that, you know, on HDL's side that you would have made, or maybe a little bit of both. And just trying to understand where that, yeah, where that would lay.
It's the latter.
Okay. Okay, that's great. So then, is there a regular communication with city staff or do you, are you aware of the frequency or cadence of that? Because I mean, I would imagine that you would partner, that HDL would partner with staff closely in this process.
Yeah, so I believe that city staff has our request email, which goes directly to our client analyst, which is our, you know, support team that specifically handles with clients. It's separate facing than what handles the taxpayer group. So we have these client analysts that basically, that the city has access to, to contact with us. I do not believe we have a regular cadence of meetings set up, but that would be something I would recommend doing once we have the discovery program set up. I believe, again, if, if the direction is that we are moving forward with this program, that we're moving forward with this stuff and we're moving forward towards the future, I do think that it is something that will be imperative to the process is keeping open communication, because again, the discovery program has a tendency to make it so that people, there's ruffled feathers, right? Businesses have to pay back taxes, they have to pay penalties, there, it's going to be a, it's a process that requires both the city and HDL being involved on an ongoing basis and being communicative with each other. And I think that reoccurring meeting is going to be imperative to making sure it's a successful program.
Ian, this is Kim Trupiano, and just to kind of refresh my memory, I went back and watched that September 2023 meeting. And I guess I remember it a little bit differently than kind of the scenario we have here today. I thought you had already done some preliminary discovery work and you identified that there were 1,100 businesses in the city of Clayton, and it sounds now like maybe that was a list we provided to you and it was hence unverified, but I remember you saying that there were 2,000 businesses that potentially could be licensed businesses in the city. So we kept talking that night about the delta of the 900, and we had a really in-depth conversation with you about, so how do you plan on reaching out to those 900 people? What would that look like? You said primarily mail, that, you know, you would try to understand why these businesses maybe that were required to get a business license, maybe they didn't understand that the city of Clayton requires that because other cities don't. Like, we spent a lot of time that night asking you those kind of details, and I think I was under the assumption the very first step was discovery, right? That was September 2023, it's now March 2025, no discovery has been done. Our former city manager Brett Pabula, who encouraged this contract with HDL, was here from September through May, through March, so for six months. And I guess I'm still not understanding, then we had an interim for four months, now Chris and Regina have been here six and seven months. So where is the breakdown in communication? And are we saying now that we only have 524 businesses? That is a more realistic number, but we still achieved our financial goals? Is that what you're saying?
So let me break that down piece by piece. So first things first is that when we first acquired the contract, the, the main thing, the delta that has been talked about here, is what caused the initial concern with HDL being able to pursue some of those businesses, right? So the reason that I mention that is because when we did our initial data analysis, we used the 1,100 businesses that were in the system, and then we mapped against the business licenses or the, sorry, the data sources that we have internally, which basically helped us identify businesses that might be out of compliance. We then acquired the data, and once we acquired the data, we started actively doing our collections work. When that started to happen, we started to realize that a lot of the data that we had was actually faulty data. So the data that we had received from the city was not actually concurrent with the things that should have been actively be worked on. So at the time, within, when the first couple of months of the contract, I had worked with Brett to ensure that, hey, we, we shouldn't start the discovery program until we have clean data, right? Cleaning that data took months. It took, I mean, it took a solid six to seven months from just getting all the businesses contacted, making sure all the data was up to date, making sure that the businesses who should have paid needed to pay and getting all the businesses who aren't paying, or the businesses who did not pay, I should say, make sure that they were supposed to not pay and that they were like not actually active in the city any longer. And so there was a lot of data cleanup that had to happen within that first kind of six to seven month time period. Following that, there was the, the kind of changeover of some of the, of the staff because there was interims, there was, now there's obviously the current staff there. That was around the time the communication breakdown happened. I am still confident that there is around 900 businesses that, because good data or bad data, there were 900 businesses, around 900 businesses that we identified that were not in your system, that we identified through some source, right? So they either had a sales tax permit, they had property tax data that they were filing, they had maybe a Yelp page, they had like all these different things that we identified. It doesn't matter that your data was good or bad, it, it just means that there's potentially either 900 or 900 plus at this point that are unlicensed and need to be followed up with. So that number hasn't changed, we still met the revenue goals, but that was after an aggressive effort of making sure that the collections data and that the, the current business license data was met, right? And that is mainly due to the efforts of cleaning up the data, not because of the discovery efforts. Those are two separate parts of the contract and parts of what we're doing. And so that's, that's why I'm focusing on if the, if the goal is to get to that point of getting those other businesses notified and all that. of getting those other businesses notified and all this, and all that, we want to make sure that we're delivering on that service and we can do that. Again, I understand that there's confusion and I take full responsibility of that confusion. It's because of our lack of communication and our lack of ability to follow up with these, these programs. And so we want to ensure that we're doing that for you guys and we want to ensure that we're doing the discovery work. We focused on the collections effort to just clean the data so we had more consistent data, so we could actually operate within the unlicensed database. But we could have done a better job of communicating and making sure that everyone was up to date on that information.
Okay, and so kind of a follow up, and thank you, Ian, kind of a follow up on Vice Mayor Wong's question then. Have you provided us monthly reporting? Are we doing the reporting ourselves? Kind of based on, like, how, how do we know exactly where we are right now? I know last month, our assistant city manager provided us kind of a visual of where we were by month, invoice, total revenue, amount invoiced and client dispersment, but that number seems in contrast to what we were talking about today.
That was provide, they do provide that report to me monthly.
Okay.
The orange portion from the last budget and audit meeting, that was just an estimate based on the previous year.
Yeah, correct. But what I'm saying is your estimate was a hundred and sixty two thousand dollars, and that's not what HDL is projecting. Is there a difference? Is there a reason for the difference?
Well, my number was a projection based on the last calendar year.
Mm-hmm.
And so as HDL collects, you know, the data every month, that number will.
No, but so do we have any sense of where we're going to end up for the end of this fiscal year? Based on, I know your estimate was, you had estimates for January through June, so now we're in March. I don't know if you have, you certainly have January. I don't know if you have February yet.
I just received February last week.
Because we look like we were on track. That's my point. We are still on track. Okay. For this, like, one sixty two number?
Correct.
Okay. Because it looked different than what HDL was presenting. And then, so obviously, we'll encourage some kind of ongoing meetings. And then the discovery portion, Ian, will that start relatively soon? Once maybe the meetings with our city staff begin occurring or?
Yeah, so I, I think immediately after this meeting, what I'm going to recommend is that we're going to be reaching out to Regina and reaching out to city staff to make sure that we're operating those reoccurring meetings. When we have those reoccurring meetings happening, then we'll make sure that we're, you know, following up and doing the discovery process as soon as possible.
Okay. And then as far as reporting out, do we have that report based on new and renewals? It would be, I think, helpful to see that broken down. It says we've got five hundred and twenty four active accounts, three hundred and fifty, three of those were renewals. That was July twenty twenty four. And then a hundred and ten new applicants, that was January twenty twenty four. And so it's March twenty twenty five. Now it would be nice to have updated information, just to see where we are. And the, the very last question I had too, because I have a business license myself for my business, is the process seemed to be a little arduous at first, but have we encountered any other problems with the software and the renewals? I know that the, I had trouble with the links and I think there was an upgrade that was done, but would you say that we've had more smooth sailing since?
Yeah, so a couple of issues I want to make sure are highlighted with the original implementation. So one is that we implemented right before your renewal season last year, or sorry, two years ago. And that is always going to be a rough, because it's just a lot of transition of data, a lot of businesses trying to renew while the system is still working on its kinks. So now we are, I would say, I'm in a pretty confident state at the moment to ensure that businesses should be easily reporting and easily paying. If you hear anything, feel free to reach out to me and our staff to make sure that we are, you know, staying on top of that. But I'm pretty confident that the, it should be a smooth operating system at this point.
Okay, thank you. Staff, is there anything else while you have Ian on that you want to address? Regina?
None at this time.
Okay. Vice Mayor Wong?
So what is the, is there an ask on the table today or is this just, is this primarily a report out?
This was just a report out, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I guess it's, it's unfortunate that the number of potential licenses is so significantly different than what we were led to believe, so that's unfortunate. But given discovery, it would be interesting to see what comes of that. I also help with business license in the city and the process. I'm not sure if I engaged this new process, but it was not the easiest thing in the world. So I think that communication, you're right, it does, it could create some challenge with community. So I think that's important that we, that there, that we're kind of circumspect on how we go about that. In terms of beginning the discovery process, when do we think that will happen?
So immediately after this meeting, I'm going to have one of my city, or one of my staff members reaching out to Regina and other city staff members to ensure that we get that process started. Whenever we get the go ahead, basically, is the idea would be that we would get this all wrapped up within the very least sixty days. And so notifications would be going out to taxpayers within that sixty day timeframe. And then that would mean, I mean, it, again, discovery, because of just the nature of how it works, it is ongoing permanently, which means that we, there isn't a time in which it goes off until businesses have, we have a hundred percent compliance, which is often very rare, because businesses tend to fall out of compliance. But generally speaking, we would be starting in that sixty day timeframe and continuing on.
Okay, so then, is the order of operations then HDL works with staff, staff helps coordinate the effort, you get direction from staff and or council to, yes, we want to do this, then HDL executes within sixty days of that? And then information starts flowing based on the tools that you, that HDL has, can bring to bear? Is that around the order of operations?
That is, that is a perfect representation of what we should be doing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and Ian, my last question was, over the summer in July, we had a meeting with Ken from HDL, and he assured us we were going to have this update from HDL in October, one year into the agreement. And we know that it's late for a number of reasons and we just want it to be as accurate as possible. But the other suggestion at that time is they thought it was odd that we signed a contract in September, October, when really it should be aligned with our fiscal year. So is there a possibility that we align it with whether it means, I know it's kind of an evergreen contract that just auto renews, but maybe realigning it with our fiscal year, which is when our business licenses are also new and renewed, July first through June thirtieth? Would that make reporting easier?
I do, I do think that it is possible to do that. I would like to, you know, work with city staff to see what the best course of action would be. To just provide you with the slightest bit of pushback just for the, just for clarity so we have understanding on both sides, is, I believe the reason it was set up that way was so that you guys could fully go through, like, let's say you guys wanted to end a contract at a particular period of time. It would be best to fully go through that renewal season so that you guys don't have to take on the excessive amount of work right away, that you have time to basically build that, like, let's say you needed to hire a new person, let's say you needed to train them, let's say you need to do whatever it is that need to be done to transition outside of cities or outside of HDL's staff. You would be able to do that with an ample amount of time between September and June for the next renewal season, rather than having it be done during June on like a, that type of, that type of renewal basis, if that makes sense. But we can change it to whatever city staff slash council wants.
Are you, are you talking about if we decide not to continue renewing the HDL contract? That that would give us ample time to make adjustments?
Correct.
Okay.
In addition, Madam Mayor, staff would also recommend to stagger contracts and not have all contracts either start or end at, at the beginning of a fiscal year, so that staff isn't bombarded with coming to council for a plethora of contracts that we work through throughout the year.
No, I understand that. I think there was just a sense that September seemed an odd time to be starting a business license contract, that it seemed off, but we'll leave that to the staff to decide. Anything else, Vice Mayor Wong? Okay, so at some point, though, we will have an update to the entire council on your progress with HDL, is that correct?
We are planning on that update for the April first city council meeting.
Okay. Wonderful, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? No public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back.
Well, there's no action items for us. So I would thank Ian again for your presentation. Where are you based out of, Ian?
Fresno, California, but I'm actually in West Virginia right now, so eight o'clock for me, so good evening.
It's almost eight o'clock, sorry, Ian.
Well, appreciate that. I'm not sure if you ever make it our way out to Clayton, but if you wanted to come to our April first meeting, then you'd be welcome to present in person.
Yeah, that would be.
I would love to do that. Thank you, thank you for the invitation.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you, Ian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if there's nothing else, we will adjourn this meeting at four forty three. And thank you all for coming today. Thank you.
Excellent, thanks.